This conference will now be recorded.
Coming back from a five-minute recess to review a letter and get the commissioner's comments, board members, excuse me.
Is everybody back?
I think everybody is here.
Okay, I'm gonna start and I'm just gonna say that I am going to, once again, back staff. I think that they don't get paid to be abused by the residents and this was something that Ryan, as the manager, made a call on and I'm gonna back staff.
Flaherty, comment?
I would like you to come back to me.
Okay, Mr. Guy, any comment?
I think we ought to back our staff.
Okay, Mr. Banks, comment?
Yeah, I have two. Brian, was Tim acting on behalf of your direction, which was a direct reflection of how you understood the board's decision from our last board meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the second piece is, again, these are two different topics. The first is, which is what we're discussing now, is whether or not to uphold staff's decision to prohibit Ed Cecil from the pool. That's one. Second is, what do we, what do we need to do from the, from the opening as far as creating some consistency or making sure that we all as a board understand what times the pool's gonna be open and closed? So I'm treating those as two separate topics. The first one is regarding Ed and the second one is whether we need to refine the opening of the pool. So I just want us to be clear as we're talking through this that we don't, we don't muddy the two. That's it for me.
Okay, Mr. Tinkle?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I don't see anywhere in here using propane language or anything that was suggested earlier. Tim didn't say anything about that. A lot of times, a lot of people will get, take aggression in a different way when somebody's in their face and arguing. This is, I've been in it 40 years. If I did that every time somebody was in my face, I don't think I could count the days. I think it merits the consideration of the staff that we asked for a response back from Mr. Cecil on what was said, especially in light of he hasn't been able to see this or respond to it. And I'd also like to talk to the gentleman that was there on the side to see if what transacted actually happened, the way it was said. But in the end, I do, we have to back staff. There's no doubt about that. We have to back staff. But I don't think it requires any type of punishment, an immediate 30-day sentence. I just don't see that. I think there needs to be, if anything, a reprimand that, hey, this is your warning. It doesn't happen again.
Sounds good. And that other gentleman that's there is a morning. You know him personally?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so.
That's who it is. Fred, it's Fred, Fred Soty, yes.
Okay, and Flaherty?
Okay. I don't feel anyone should be abusive to anybody. I think everyone should be respectful, okay? However, the other thing is, the first day, he should have been given a warning and saying that the consequence is the 30 days. So giving him just the 30 days without the warning is a fine line, okay? Because no one should be abusive and there should been, I mean, I agree there should be something done. I feel the first day, the warning should have gone to him immediately. That is not acceptable to be the staff. That's.
Okay. Brian, do you have any comment or position or, you know, how you would handle it if you listened to that or the warning action or?
We wish to, after the incident, first time, to give a warning, then we can reevaluate that for a warning next time. Two days in a row, me personally, was uncalled for. I mean, especially the second time, he actually walked into Tim's office. I was about a foot from him from his face, is what Tim told me. And Fred could hear what was verbally and Fred's out by the pool. So, and Fred actually, that worked out well and you can figure out what Fred said he would have done. But to me, I mean, it's up to you folks ultimately. If you want to do nothing and walk away with it, then that doesn't look good for me or my staff. If you want to do a week, two weeks, that's up to yours' call. But to me, I told him this morning, you're not going to verbally abuse my staff. You will not.
And I think, sorry, Mrs. Feinberg, is okay if I?
Go right ahead, Mrs. Flaherty.
I think that Tim or anybody should be told that, I'm sorry, that should be told that if somebody becomes abusive, should automatically say, you do know that you can lose privileges here if you're, if you don't act correctly. Then it is part of the, and that way, if it ever happens again, at least that warning is out. Because, I mean, lots of times, even the policeman who stopped you give you a warning.
Rule number one at the board up there at the pool, we have the right to decide who can and who not. The other issue, my concern is, this is Tim. He's a full-grown man. What would he have done if I'd been one of my ladies and he went off on him?
Hey, and Brian, can you just, for clarity, what, during these two instances, what time does the pool open?
We opened the pool at 7:10. It's been 7:10 for the last two weeks. Today, it moved to 7:15 and we post signs. We have a sign at the entrance to the, where you drive in and there's another sign behind the counter. And basically, it's just telling you do the sunrise, sunset. It's 7:15 started today, but it has been 7:10 for the last two weeks.
So we're talking about a delay of 10 to 15 minutes?
10 minutes as of till today, correct? Yes, tomorrow starts 7:15. So it's a 10 minute.
So it was 10 minutes that Ed had to wait?
Yes.
Okay.
For me, this is an overreaction for 10 minutes. I think, I'm, once again, just reiterate, I will support staff on this.
What was that, Margaret? Would you say that again, please?
I said it's, this was a complete overreaction over 10 minutes and I will completely support staff on this. I don't think that staff should be abused.
Agreed.
Thanks, Phil. Do you want to make a motion? Any board action or?
I don't know of any action in the board consensus.
Well, my thing is that I'd like to speak to at least Fred and I'd like to hear from Ed what his opinion is on this, what has been written. I think you, we have to listen to both sides. I certainly, I certainly think, see what the 10 minutes is. When we let this meeting, and I know that it was two weeks, three weeks ago, I would have left the meeting that it was 7 o'clock. And it sounds immediate that we went to 7:10 two weeks ago. That was after we said 7 o'clock. So I can see where there's the frustration. Ed Cecil was at that meeting where we said 7 o'clock. So this, I don't think all those facts are out of the table. If I was at a board meeting, you said 7, I would take it to mean you're going to be open at 7 o'clock, not 7:10. Now, if there was longer than that, but I think it was two weeks ago we had this discussion, that we said 7 o'clock.
Madam Chairman, point of order, let's get on with this.
Yeah, I agree. I.
You want to hear the truth or not? We at that meeting said 7 o'clock, did we not?
At that meeting, we said that we, we listened to Brian when he said he have to open 30 minutes after sunrise and we all talked about the fact that that would be a moving target.
And we said that it would start at 7 o'clock. He didn't say that it'd start at 10 after 7. I mean, I can understand where the frustration comes. I'm not condoning the way the response was done, certainly not doing that. But we did say 7 o'clock. But so my, my motion would be that I want to talk to the other two people before I, so that I have a whole story before I make a motion to, or what the manner of justice is served. I'm totally, totally opposed to a 30-day-on-a-first-time offense. A warning, don't ever, don't let that begin. I understand that.
But it did happen twice.
I'm sorry?
It did happen twice.
But it happened twice, unfortunately, we weren't in the middle of being able to make the decision or say, I just, I just.
The, I have a draft of the minutes in the board meeting. And the board may want to tape ours, but the draft minutes, I'd like to see by the board. Mr. Tinkle moves, seconded by Mr. Banks, beginning on Monday, July 6, 2020, to open the pool from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., seven days per week, subject to the limitations of the requirements on sunlight.
There you go.
And through 5-0. So you were correct, Mr. Tinkle, except for the specific, there was also anything.
All of our, my deal was two weeks ago, it was 7 o'clock.
Correct, really. I mean, the requirements.
It's a bad situation that we're taking it, taking this permit, like I said, to the oblivion. There's latitude to this. If I had to the permit or to the, this level on the permit, on the other issues that we looked the other way on, holy Christ, we're, are we in trouble?
The thing is.
Madam Chairman.
The thing. Go ahead.
Support our staff and to get this thing behind us, that we change this suspension to two weeks and move on to important business.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call the vote. Supervisor Flaherty?
Okay, could you repeat the motion, please?
Question is the two-week suspension rather than 30 days.
Okay, yes.
Okay, we have a yes. Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
No.
Okay, the motion passes 4-0 for a two-week suspension. Sorry, Mr. Cecil, and next time we'll be more judicious about handing out a warning on the first time. We just didn't expect it a second time.
I know there's nobody in there. You made a motion.
For the people attending remotely, for the ones who, again, anybody else want to comment on the action taken by the board of the topic?
So anyone that has any comments or questions?
I'm sorry, where are we, please? I lost track.
Yeah. We're planning on proceeding with the two-week suspension. We're just asking if there were any audio comments or Mr. Cecil have any comments and then we'll move on to the next item. Well, all the mics are unmute and hearing none. We'll move down the agenda. And what we have is Attorney and Engineers' report. Danny, are you online?
Yes. Very stimulating conversations I've been listening to.
It's suspended from the pool.
I have questions.
Okay, we want to go to Tony first. Tony, do you have anything for Attorney Report?
No, again, I'm waiting for copy of the deed from the county. The East Commerce Drive, but it's closed. The county owns that. I'll edit anything back in Attorney General's office. Again, as soon as I do, I'll let the board know. And Chris may want to comment on this. We had a conference call the other day. Our rule with phase three, there are still many issues on that. If the district staff has some comments, questions, concerns.
What's the issue on our view with this?
Always, but ingress, refresh, utility.
Just kind of run the lakes. They said they would turn over to their HOA if we didn't want.
Yeah, I think our approach was, that may not be acceptable as part of our backbone system.
Whether it's a tail end of a system and they go into permanent preserve.
Correct.
But how do we, do we turn over the permitting?
Oh, no, that's the issue because we are the permitting entity in the operating. No, no, that was part of the discussion.
And Tony's comment to them was, it has to go to the board.
Yeah, but that's, that's given me a hard thought.
Yeah, there are some other issues and, you know, at the staff level, we have some other matters to double check on, how to work easements of the utility lines. So I think that may come back to the board, not until August 6, 7, or something.
We're gonna try to, yeah. They had some easement issues where the utility lines are crossing the city right of way. And they said the city doesn't want to give easements across the right of way.
And, oh, you're talking about the, you're, correct. And there was some reference that the city's engineer said it's okay because we, the city, don't have any problems writing the lines even though they're no easements. You have the right because it's a public private property. It's not my intention. So anyway, we have some more work to do.
Here's passing out engineering license.
Penance.
Penance for Tony?
It's a crash license. I have nothing further.
Okay, is there any questions for Tony from the board members? Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Can I just make a comment?
Who's that?
Phil Measy.
Okay.
Yeah, just a very short comment. We, we request the board's indulgence in this. We have a very, very tight schedule to get to implement this instruction work by our new bulk provider. And we will be asking you to, as much as possible, to help expedite the, getting the, the easements and the permits. Thank you.
Conversation with Chris in the past. I had a brief conversation with Phil early this week. Hotwire is, proposed to be a provider in quality and preserve. And so Phil was asking, we had a conversation about how to expedite district review if necessary because it appears that some of the lines may be going in on or under district property or areas where the district has easements. And so Phil just wants to set the table. The staff is, we work with you, set the table for the, the board may have documents coming down the route. So the staff review will get these, depending on where, where the new lines are going to be run. I guess they're planning on running them at the rear of the properties, which could be interesting with all the maintenance and easements and drainage. So that's part of, but right now, solely at the staff level, I've not seen a map. I don't know if Chris has.
And we'll have a meeting next Thursday to discuss preliminaries.
Phil, Phil, where's Hotwire related to, can they put anything together yet?
Relative to who?
Has Hotwire put together a set of plans for the location of all the assets?
I think they're in the process of doing that. You know, they're gonna be the, take the lead on this thing. Obviously, we are not, but, but we would just ask the board to, and, and the staffs to expedite everything we're doing as much as possible.
Well, the reason I ask is because in Stony Brook, I'm sorry, in Palladium Reserve, all the road rights of way, I'm assuming, have a reference to utilities. Typically, they do, but it appears that a lot of the lines are running through rear of the properties. Well, but I mean, on those rear lot lines inclusive of the utility easements?
It all depends and that's what's important. The district has is a map delineating the dimensions of the areas that Hotwire proposes to go, whether it's a 10-foot wide easement, whether it's in somebody's backyard, whether the coven's provided for that in favor of the first property or whether it's a district-owned property. It's very preliminary right now. It's, I think, we talked about, at least giving the board a heads up that that will be coming down the road.
Yeah, Phil, what we ran into in Gateway, I know in the past board when they started working with, before we went Comcast, but with Blue Stream, they were worried about some of the language that's on the plats relative to a description of who has access to those utility easements. A lot of times, they'll talk about the utilities, but they don't get into any reference that will allow you to draw a conclusion that a fiber line is qualified. So you really need to look at these closely.
Yeah, some of the older plats were not as clear as who they have it, you know. And I think, Mrs. Flaherty, you had a question?
I did.
Okay.
I was wondering where we are at with the letter that's going to the N R.
Oh, yeah, I've not drafted it yet. I apologize. I got totally sidetracked, but that will suffice the top, yes. Thank you for that reminder also. Thank you.
Okay, for the attorney, engineer, comments, reports?
We got nothing on the agenda, but I just, a couple of quick items as it relates to roundabout discussion. Plan is at the, for the next board meeting to come back with a recommendation on, for the commerce, for the utility portion. If you recall, at previous meeting, last meeting, meeting before, we were waiting on references so that we could make a positive recommendation. So we had a discussion today with the county and, and the prime contractor, Wright Construction. So I think we'll be able to make that recommendation at the next board meeting. And as I heard the county today, it sounds like regardless of what method they are gonna go with, whether it would have been a roundabout or signalization, sounds like they're asking that your utilities be upgraded anyhow. So we had previously prepared that task authorization. So I guess my plan would be, or to ask, if you want me to bring that back at the next board meeting.
Well, I've got the same impression that, that's the first I've heard this, that whether we go roundabout or we go signalization, all utilities have to be brought up to speed, regardless of whether or not they're going to stay in their pavement that's not even disturbed, which I think is.
Thank you.
Man, when you're looking at 30-year-old life pipe and 50 to 75-year service life, that seems to me to sure be throwing money away just to automatically replace it. Vows, totally, I understand, but just doing it for pipe, that's wasting money.
Well, I don't think we necessarily have to discuss it today, but for you guys to have in your brain for the next meeting, if it's appropriate, I can bring that back and that can be discussed at that, at that meeting at least.
I think.
For thought over the next couple of weeks.
I think you should bring back to us the full deal deal of what we're talking about because you go to that intersection and there is one heck of a lot of utilities that we're talking about that have to be done. So I think the board needs to see the order of magnitude of that relocation.
I think what'll help, I'll put together a figure that we can share, that Chris can share on the screen so everybody can see what we're talking about in terms of potable water irrigation and enforcement.
Margaret, another question?
Go ahead.
Danny, at the meeting, a resident came in and asked about his pond 109. I know that we have already done a revision to the, lack of a better term, budget of ponds to be done, phase one, phase two, phase three. I think it would be appropriate, I don't know what the procedure is we go through to authorize it, but I think that we need to get you and who else worked with you on that? Brian wasn't here at the time, but I would suggest Brian or L or however worked with you. And I think we need to take phase three of the Gateway Facility Plan, reanalyze it to see whether or not a pond, for example, 109 or any of those others have gotten worse over the last five years since we did that to move them around like we did with Pond 83.
Yeah, we can get with, we can get with Brian. It certainly hasn't been done since, you know, since Brian's been here and it's been two or three years, if not longer. And, you know, things do change as we've seen in the, in the past on these conditions. Some get a little more aggressive. So I think it would be appropriate to, you know, to relook at those that have not been, that have not been done and put in the mix yet. So we could certainly do that.
Re-rank those and just see if it needs to, Danny, I'm very familiar with 109 and it is a serious issue on the banks.
Sure, yeah. We'll, we'll get with Brian and, and we can do a walkthrough of the different lakes and that, and bringing that one into the mix.
Great, great.
I have a question.
That's all I have.
Engineers.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. Flaherty.
Okay. Mr. Nelson here, did you take a chance to look at Devon Shire's lake, of what I was talking about, the rocks going up and down?
I have not, no. But we can get out there next week and look at that.
Okay, thank you. And then the Lake 83, remember, we went and looked at it and I was wondering, what test was done on that sand that's underneath that material? And when was the test done? And was it done just before it was brought to, to the tablet lake done or was it done like a month before? Do you have?
The sand?
Yeah.
Compaction test, Dana?
Yes. Thank you.
Do we have, we have copies of the compaction tests to show that they all passed the compaction test?
Everything, yeah, we, everything that we have, I don't know if we did compaction, but yeah, everything that we did checked out. So I know we've had some issues, you know, since then. And, and that's what, of course, we have the, you know, the warranty for. But I'll look back and see, but I know that everything that had been done passed from, you know, any compaction, any requirements for layment, sloping, the whole nine yards. So everything passed. I mean, they had issues and we had the, you know, the punch list and, and those items were corrected and now we've entered into the, the warranty period. But, you know, and as we mentioned, anything that we have, they will come in fix, they're required to under that warranty.
Well, the real issue is, is whether we had a compaction test or not. If there's a failure, it's the what Kathleen's alluding to, the warranty still covers us.
But can I see the results of those tests? I would like to see.
Yeah, I'll get with, I'll go with Tyler.
Right, I would like to see those results, if that's us.
Yeah, I'll get with, I'll get with Tyler. I didn't, you know, have direct involvement with that, but I'll get with Tyler, see what we have, what was, what was actually done and if we can get copies to the, to the board.
Thank you. That was one of my questions, Mrs. Feinberg.
Okay. Mr. Guy, any questions for Danny?
No, no, Madam Chair.
Mr. Banks?
None for me.
And I have none, so.
Well. Thanks, Danny.
Have a nice weekend.
Thank you, Guy. All right, thank you.
Oh, Danny, one more thing. I sent you an email about the traffic lights on Griffin and the extension. I found that work in that memo you guys did.
Okay, I'm glad, yeah, because I actually had sent, I'd sent the email to, to my engineer that did that. So I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't ignoring that. I was, I was looking into it. So you found it. I'm, I'm off the hook.
Yeah, I appreciate the effort.
All right, sure, sounds, sounds good. I appreciate it, guys.
Hey, Danny, excuse me, another question. Danny, Randy Cerchi left us a map, an aerial photo, and I know it's not a drawing, but it's a, it's a map. He is showing on this proposed roundabout going off on Griffin. roundabout going off on Griffin, a access into 711. I think you and I and Tyler, Tyler and I, or somebody looked at that once before. He's got Sean going in off of Griffin Drive and the previous drawing we looked at, that's on our property. They don't know where we got the road. Have you read that?
Yeah, I heard him talking about it. I heard him talking about it. I'd like to see that. You know, and I, and I know he also had the study that they had done to look at, you know, the different alternatives. And I don't think that's the information that I had, that I had seen previously. But yeah, if we have a map that shows what he's talking about as far as that access, I heard him talking about it, but I, I wasn't sure. I didn't look at it previously. Maybe, maybe Tyler had.
Well, the reason I bring it up is, is the last map I looked at, the property line running north and south on the east side or the backside of the building is right back there behind that driveway. Well, if you spin that north, that means that basically none of that approach is on their property. It's on ours. That's going to totally have a access to 711 right off the roundabout.
Didn't you say they're eliminating access? They said they eliminated it, they put in the signalization. Ah, okay. Just something to check out.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly look at that. I, I heard him talking that, or saying that whatever option he was, they were talking about, they've discussed it with 711 and 711 seems kosher with it from their side.
As before, they told them that they were going to have to change their road.
Yeah, so I don't know. I, I, you know, not, I've, I've been on the phone, not on the computer, so I haven't seen anything that he might have shared. So I certainly would like to take a look at that if you guys have, if you have anything.
Thank you.
Chris has anything. So, all right, guys, anything else?
No.
No.
We all have a good weekend.
You too.
Thank you. Bye.
And Chair, our, our next up is a status report from Rich Sanders at Zenner, and he has a presentation to make on the work they've been doing recently and the performance of their system. Mr. Sanders?
Currently muted.
You're muted? Here, mic is muted. Sanders, oh, he's on.
He has to load his.
Okay. I can tell you, I've learned more about roundabouts. By the way, they're becoming very popular in, in, in Texas now for some reason. And, you know, I, I've always seen roundabouts. Europe uses them a lot, didn't see them a lot in the U.S., but all of a sudden they're becoming popular. So, okay, here is my screen. Can everybody see it okay?
We're getting there.
Are you going to follow the handout?
Yes.
Okay.
What is this subtitle? I don't know. Get rid of this back here. Something popped up on my screen here.
Um, there we go. All right. You need to, you need to switch. So up at the top where it says display settings, you're showing the presenter view and not the presentations.
Uh.
And we see, what we see is the presenter view, not the presentation view.
Ah, okay, so let's see here.
I think if you go to display set, settings at the very top.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. And screen. And I want to go to this one over here. How's that better?
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Great. So I'm just going to give you a quick update of, of what we've been doing there. So I, I want to first talk about what is our goal. So our goal is to get Gateway Services back to reporting properly at 99.5, which is typically what the vast majority of our systems across the country report at. That's higher reporting than, than I can tell you our competitors get to. But 99.5% of reporting is, is excellent and we're going to get you there. Right now I have a full-time Zenner employee on site until this is accomplished. So that person, I have, I have a guy assigned out there and he actually lives in the area and he'll be there until we get to that, that reporting percentage. I also sent a project manager on site to repair infrastructure you guys have had some issues with that didn't seem to be able to get up and running. So we've done that. Looking at some more, we, we just discovered there's a, there's an, a piece of equipment that seems to be having some, some issues and we're going to start looking at that tomorrow. It looks like maybe radio interference from some directional antenna that's, that's coming in. But we'll, we'll get to the bottom of that here very quickly. And I assigned a project manager to oversee completion of this goal. So we now have people in place to make sure this goal happens in a very short period of time. Just to give you some ideas, a lot of this information is to give the board an understanding. I don't believe you got, the board in general has an understanding of how the system works completely. So what I did is I took, for an example, what did we do for infrastructure? So we went and there was a gateway, a gateway is a collector that collects all the readings from a, a great number of the health readers that are in the ground. We repaired, and there was also an AC repeater. So we repaired several issues when we were out there. And I won't read everything line by line, but what it amounted to was a reconfiguration. If you look at the cause and resolution for the collector on one slide and then the Acer on the other, you'll see what we did with those pieces of equipment. And those two pieces of equipment are now working perfectly. Right? And after my project manager left and, like I said, we have another repeater out there that seems to be going off and online. And we're going to troubleshoot that over the next day or so and get that up to speed as well. We also discovered because of the expansion you did out there to, and also to bring down your latency, and I explained what latency is. Latency is basically the time it takes for, for information to get in from the endpoint into the server. We want to bring that down so it's quicker. We recommended adding a repeater in a specific area. And by the way, the system's able to generate all those data. So we go online and we could see the system and how it's functioning. I can actually click on every endpoint in the system and see its latency, see how it reports in, and decide where equipment is needed to be placed. So we're asking now for a new, an additional repeater to be put specifically in this area. We've talked to Leslie about it. And we actually left a, a repeater behind so that that could be installed. So if that can be installed, that would be wonderful. That will help us get to our goals of getting the latency under control there.
Rick, can I interrupt there? When you did the original design five, six, seven years ago, what changed in the design parameters that necessitated the new Acer on the north side of Hampton Park?
Well, you guys have added to the system. Now, out in that area, I think just south of there, you know, I, I remember I have hundreds of systems across the country. So, but my memory serves you right, and Leslie will probably know better. Didn't, didn't the city grow out that way a little bit and you added some units?
Yes, partially, Leslie. A portion of the Hampton Park on the side of 82, that was in addition.
So, so that, and who was talking, by the way?
This is Ed. It was, so basically it's a growth issue.
Yeah, yes. And, 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 you know, you're always going to find as things change in your community, trees get taller, things happen, you may have to fine tune your infrastructure from time to time. And, and that's what we're here for. We're here to give you that advice. Doesn't cost you anything. And then, but we, we, you got to stay, we got to stay on top of it. So that's, that's number one. So infrastructure's number one. That'll bring down the latency and help with reporting being much faster and much more accurate. So that's what we worked on. The other thing, by the way, the consultant you hired did call me and have a conversation with me. And I talked there for a little over an hour and I'm sure we'll talk again. And, and I, I know Meter Sis, I actually did a presentation for them a couple of years ago. They're up in the Carolinas. But I wanted everybody to understand orientation of a lithium battery matters. So rather than me to say that, because you've heard me say that before, is I'm giving you information. So we're working with the four leading lithium battery manufacturers in the world. So it's not Zenner saying this, it's them. And we're trying to do this, this, um, understanding with them so that we understand how batteries react in different orientation or to heat and cold, right? Because that affects batteries as well. So, but I thought you'd like to understand the kind of battery loss or power loss you get in a battery if it's upside down, which is what the first graph shows you here. You get almost a 40% loss in the battery capacity if the battery somehow is upside down for a long period of time. And if it's sideways, you're going to get about a 20% degradation. So battery orientation does matter. And what I did is I gave you some definitions from, from two different battery manufacturers. We're actually, as I said, working with four because Zenner globally is the largest purchaser of batteries for this kind of industry in the world. And we want to understand these things. And of course, all the battery companies want to work with us because they want to sell us batteries. So anyway, just to give the board a better understanding of that, and we'll get to why I'm mentioning that, right? So here's another manufacturer that does the same thing. So if we go down a little bit, I want to review that a lot, sometimes we find when we do our analysis and some of the products, again, we're finding damage to some of the products, right? These are pictures from the last presentation, but always remember, everything isn't in a perfect environment there. So you're going to have to do ongoing maintenance. We talked last time about damaged product, damaged by installer. The installer did a terrible job. And I know your consultant was asking me about that. He has certain perceptions about the installer and that couldn't have been the installer that had did a lot of this damage and stuff. I disagree with that. But in any case, the, there is, there is those things that happen during installation that it can, can affect the product then and years down the road. And I'm just going to give you some examples. These pictures we've shown you before, when you see things like this, you have to understand that affects the performance of the products. And where it isn't, across the board, every unit is damaged out there or not, are not being, being cared for properly. There is a good number of them that need to be taken care of and should be checked on from time to time. So you really need, I would encourage the community there, once we get this system up and running again perfectly for you, that you dedicate one person to look at the system every day, take the two or three items that need to be looked at and go fix them. Don't wait till it piles up. I would encourage you to do that. I can promise you, the customers that do that, and I can certainly give you names for those customers to talk to, will tell you they have very few issues with their system, the systems that, and, and these are people that have similar systems to the size that you have and have had them for about the same amount of time. Again, some more pictures. So we talked about why units fail last time. There's lots of reasons why units fail. The biggest reason though is, is, is damage to units and battery orientation where you've drained the batteries prematurely, either through orientation or the fact that the unit has lost its connectivity and is continually searching to reconnect. And that has to do with clock, has to do with, with your infrastructure. And we want to get those things all right. And again, one to close with the warranty, we are way outside our warranty. Every one of those products that you've seen in these pictures, we've taken back, even though the orientation of batteries, this equipment wasn't installed properly, you got, we know what the problems were in the beginning because we were there. We stood behind every one of these products and we're replacing those products in your system. And we're continuing to supply labor at our cost to do that in a major way. So I hope you understand our interest is getting your system right. It is not across, across the board that our equipment sucks, it doesn't work, it stinks. I know you guys might have the impression, that is not the case. You can go online and you will not find anybody complaining about us and our equipment as you do our competitors. And there are no lawsuits out there. We stand up and we take care of any issues that we have on our equipment. And we're going to stand side by side with Gateway, as I said before, and get your system right. And now I'm going to open it up to the floor here. Are there any questions I can answer?
Questions, Martin?
Go ahead, Mr. Tinkle.
Rich, can you go to the first picture, set of dual pictures after Gateway findings? It's not back about four or five pages. Keep going. No, next one. Okay, next one.
All right, let me go back to.
There you go. Picture on the right, what on earth am I looking at?
Well, the.
You on a meter at an angle cocked in a meter pit.
You're correct. That's exactly what you're looking at.
How in the hell could that have been built that way and gotten any type of an acceptance? I mean, that's, that's an abortion.
I, I can't answer that question. All I can tell you is when we're out there, these, these pictures are taken by our guys when, and we're not out there doing every one because obviously you're, you have some people that have done some work out there as well. But, you know, again, you can read my warranty, that unit, if we found it like that, would not be under warranty if it was dead because of its orientation. But we warranted it anyway. And I hope the community appreciates. We, it's not, it's costing us money to, to build units and put them back in the ground for you. And we're doing these things to make sure that you get a hole again.
Rich, where was this picture taken and was this one of the original installations or the secondary installation?
You know, I, this was, this picture was taken, I think, last year, when we were there last year, late last year, whenever it was. Leslie, you might know, because I'm sure they gave you addresses on these things, didn't they?
Yes, I can look it up.
I'd like to see this one, Leslie. Rich, we'll go on to the very last picture. It looks like two yellow containers. Are, are those the, the batteries that had been brought out and laying horizontally that are supposed to be in that capsule?
That's correct. Somebody had taken the cover, the bottom plate off and batteries were hanging out. They're probably curious looking at it. You know, people do strange things, they just do. And you're going to run into that occasionally.
Well, we'll, we'll get with Leslie on when that was taken. I mean, I don't understand under any set of circumstances why anything would ever look like that.
Ed, Ed, I got to tell you, people go in and do strange things. They're curious, they do things. Listen, it's, Leslie probably has seen worse than that. So, and, and you got a good team there. I think they have, this is just my impression. I think they have a lot of things going on to maintain the utility. And what we've done recently for our customers is there, our system can help you generate, every morning you come in, it can generate reports where you can look at the health of the system down to every MIU in the system. And if a person does that and, and takes care of the system, your system will always remain at, at a very high level.
Leslie, do you have the data that Rick's talking about on these pictures that I would be able to come in and get a location and some type of a history of timing of when these were taken? I, I'm just flabbergasted looking at this crap. It's unbelievable.
I have some reports that are submitted to me. I can look up that information.
Are, are we to the point where we won't see these type of pictures anymore? Or do we, investigatory? investigatory work that will show even more of this?
No, I think, I think what's going to happen is as we go through the system and and I'm going to, let me, let me go back for a second. And when you see like this, the picture on on the right, that pit should be clean. You know? And this goes down to, again, having a guy responsible to maintain the system so that he goes out periodically, does these inspections. You got broken lids, you got, you know, pits that are full of dirt and I don't know what, I guess those are like, are they shells and stuff in there?
What it looks like, yeah.
Were they, was this thing underwater and infested by some sort of, I don't know, shell animal or something? I don't know. Anyway, when you see this, listen, we, we work in areas where we got scorpions, snakes. We find everything in pits. And Florida just has their own set of challenges. You know, every set part of the country has challenges. In in West Texas, it's gophers and snakes and you know, and you're literally surprised in bees' nests, you'd be surprised what builds up in these pits that we we deal with. But the most important thing, and I stress this with the board, because everybody there keeps saying they want this system right and stabilized. I'm doing that. But going forward, once we accomplish that, you got to be committed to one person looking at that system every day and and every day going out and taking care of the two or three items that they see. That's, you got it, you can't let it mount up on you. And your system will give you great payback when you do that. The data that will flow in will be invaluable to the community, will teach you more about how to use that data where we won't be focused on, you know, why the system isn't working properly to how do we use the data to to get more value out of it for the, for, for the the utility and the community itself. And we'll be able to help you and teach you all that.
Are there more of these type of pictures floating around that meant to scare us later?
No, I mean, when you, I think, we've taken a lot of pictures. These are just some of them, but and I'd have to go back through the archives and deal them because they're stored on a drive. We stored them and but again, Leslie has been there. Leslie's a really good person. I mean, she's easy to work with. She, I think she wants to get the system right. I think if you blessed her with the the authority to go, go get what we need to get this system perfect, she'd do it.
That's all I have. Thank you.
But does everybody understand how battery orientation really does affect? I mean, even your flashlights, you place your flashlight upside down, it's going to be dead and you leave it like that for six or eight months. You know, battery, battery orientation very much matters. And we got to make sure that we keep our systems right. And and they'll give you great value if you do that. Is, any other questions? Many board, other of the board members?
This, Leslie, I just have to.
Go ahead, go ahead, Leslie.
I just wanted to, I know I've said it before in the past, but, you know, we do have a full-time person, myself and Wyatt, dedicated to this, to get the system where it needs to be. But we are not going to be able to do that with just one person when we're running the numbers that we're running. When we're running one hundred and fifty MIUs that are dead or ETRs, we're just never going to get there.
We're going to get that all cleaned up for you, Leslie, but in in and I don't, I don't mean to be controversial, okay? But we, we wanted Wyatt to go check something today and he's out flushing lines. And I understand utilities have other work to do. So it's not only this work that that you guys are dedicated to.
Right.
And and so, and I understand that. Please understand, I get it. But what I'm asking for is when we get this system right, that we do have one person, that their primary responsibility is this first, then maybe flushing lines, not flushing lines and then this, as an example. That's all.
Okay.
That, that I'm sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, I just want to know what's, what's our objective here? Where's the finish line? That what do we, what is our objective of where's the end? Is it total replacement? Is it getting down to a certain small percentage of defects? I mean, we just, we keep talking about all these issues and batteries, and I think we as the board understand where we, at least we should understand where the defects are coming from. I'm just not clear on where's the end goal? What are we trying to accomplish?
Question you don't know the answer to.
The, the goal is what I had on my first slide, to get your reporting to be perfect. Right? Or where, you know, next to perfect and to have you maintain that system daily to keep it upright. You are never, I don't care what system you have, Doug, you are always going to have to have a person that's going to be taking care of it. No system runs without care. You are putting electronic, pieces of electronic equipment in a very hostile environment in the ground. Those pictures are just examples of what you see when you open a pit up. And you are, you are going to have to maintain that system. It is never going to be maintenance free. If that's what you are led to believe by somebody, that is absolutely not the case.
So our goal is to get to at least the the number one bullet is what what makes most sense to me is is reporting properly at ninety-nine percent of the time. And that, that means that's you know, that's not reporting properly is a result of defective, some kind of defective, some kind of defect. Correct?
It, it, some kind of defect or a piece of infrastructure or, you know, I mean, as I said, like we're adding a piece of infrastructure to strengthen the system and get better reporting. So we had it on the system.
Where are we at today, Leslie?
I'm sorry. We're at ninety, I have to look and hold on a second, ninety-seven?
Yeah, almost ninety-eight on a three day, but we want to get that closer to one day, Doug. And because I looked at it and but and that's when I looked at the ace, the acer that's going in and out that's affecting your reporting. So you're probably, from an endpoint standpoint, you're probably okay. There's probably only I don't know, a handful of units that aren't reporting and our guy is out there doing that now, checking every one of those. But once we fix the acer, put the new acer we wanted to handle latency, fix the other acer, the repeaters, these are repeaters, AC repeaters, our reporting should be very close to that ninety-nine point five percent.
Sorry, one other thing. I know that we want to get to a reporting goal of ninety-nine point five, but I also think we also need to address the ETR issue. Because you could, you could have an ETR that's reporting a number, so it's not really a non-report, but it's still not correct.
Right. And we have reports you can run that'll indicate that there may be something going on there, cut wires, bad ETR. Those reports are there and you can run those every day. And if there's one out there that's not quite right, you go check it. See if the wires are cut, see what's going on, see if it's a bad ETR and replace it. And 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 we'll work with you to to get everything organized to do that, so that it's a daily process. Because we're going we're going through all the ETRs. We're going to get the ETRs and the MIUs all up to speed. And then we're going to get that system reporting properly and turn it over to you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? For Rich Sanders? Thank you very much, Mr. Sanders. I appreciate you're giving us the update. And we look forward to this project coming to a successful conclusion.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. One more presentation back to you, Leslie.
Yes, I can go ahead and change that on my end. Just give me a second.
Do you have anything else? We've got a utility service application informational only.
Yes, that was really a updated and new format for a utility service application. And it really is just for information only. I think it replaces an application that we've never had. Traditionally, this utility has never taken all the information down on a formal application, which when the customer signs, so they're agreeing to buy with by the terms and conditions of the utility. So that's just another step forward for us.
No, well, I, I think that it was a form, but Leslie updated substantially, she ran by me a couple little tweets to it, but she did a great job.
No, I have not been able to find a form. There's never been a contract.
There was one.
There might have been one, but this is.
She did a great job.
That would be moving to the action agenda item. And this is just asking for board approval to use the remainder of the two thousand and three bond funds Pelican Preserve had, and they used up four months ago, they were for the board, they request for a hundred and five thousand dollars for capital improvements for installation and irrigation. And that was approved by the board and it left about seventy-three thousand dollars in that bond fund. And we were asking the board to approve an application to draw on those funds for capital improvements for the drainage conveyance behind the Wind Dixie that serves the north half of Pelican Preserve. And there hadn't been any maintenance done back there in a little more than eleven years. And we not only cleaned the thing out, built an access road, but we installed the TRM material and also stone back there to stabilize the whole.
Is this just to repay back the OO one fund or borrowing the money?
Well, it really isn't because we use the OO one as part of a drainage improvement, really looking timing. This was an opportune on our moment because when the lake banks start, it got slowed by a few weeks because we were waiting for the clearance from the development order from the county. Matt Tower was sitting there with his equipment with not much to do. And we made an instant move forward.
Where, where did the money come from to pay the contractor for the work that we're now using this money to pay for?
Came from the OO one.
That's what.
And so we were
Just reimbursing back the OO one account.
Yep. And we do that. And we went to PPAK and they approved it, like that served the north half of Pelican. So that's what we'll move forward with. And is there any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Getting a call to vote. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy, that's absent. Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes. Before the record, I'm not sure where Mr. Guy was reading, but he six fifty-eight PM.
And the last item that I had today was the work we've been doing from the staff level to reduce some funding. And then you'll see there are seven items there. Basically, we deleted a position, we funded another one. Utility reserves that was approved at the last meeting. We've taken some other items from utility reserves. We deleted refurbishment from irrigation zones for the capital improvement. And we reduced a couple of major important items, the stormwater system catch basin cleaning and also the maintenance and repair of sidewalk by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. However, I am working right now to implement a utility revenue recapture fee, which would basically be the enterprise fund paying to the district a fee for the use of their right of ways to operate the utility system. This isn't, this is not an uncommon situation. It happens at a lot of local governments where they're basically assessing their enterprise fund and operational fee to do business. So with all these reductions, we've brought the budget three hundred and thirty-nine thousand approximately. And we would hope we also made some funds available for carryover from the money that was appropriated two weeks ago from the enterprise fund reserve account. And we would hope that that money coupled with this reduction would bring the district's budget to a net increase of zero from last year. And that was the work that we did, let's say, bringing it down to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And I did, we did eliminate one position.
Question. I think it's admirable, some of that stuff, that item number four, I don't understand that. I don't go wrong with that at all. I, I do not, when I've got an employee that's doing his job, in fact, doing a very good job at doing his job, why am I taking out ten percent of his salary when it works out to be less than a dollar per resident per year?
I'll tell you the thing. The thing behind it. Sure. And Mr. Tinkle, that's really kind of a symbolic thing because there's a lot of belt tightening going around through the community and through other areas. And I'm just trying to show a little leadership and also demonstrate that the belt tightening is affecting everybody. And I'm not going to sit on my perch and say, well, it's not bothering me. So that, that was why. It was really.
Don't do business that way. We're going to have a cut, we have a cut across the board. And I see no need for a cut whatsoever. I think you're running this thing a hundred percent. It's hidden on all eight cylinders. I just don't see the need and necessity to do all this. We, we've got, thanks, and you said it with, with the commissioner here. We got assets in this community that are in deplorable condition. And if anybody, the other board members have been over there at Gateway Greens and watched that twenty-seven thousand dollar valve go in, how many more of us are we going to have to do because of twenty years of ignorance on this board doing nothing, not making this system? I'm just opposed to these cuts. We, we can't afford it going forward. Also, we're doing stick in the can down the road and somebody else is going to have to pay for it.
And I, I hope to say that that approval of some of that money, we moved out of reserves, included a valve exercise machine. So in those sweeps, we're, we're hoping to eliminate some of that and manage the asset instead of managing it when it breaks.
Is this, I, I did a point for doing this, but is this going to come before us for a action to revise the current budget?
Well, that's what I'm asking for today is I'll move forward. And we made some minor cuts to the Sunnybrook budget. And then so the next budget that we'll put together will show this decrease of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And again, I understand it's small on that cut, but if we get to the point, depending on the tax, I mean, the returns come in, if we have to start cutting like what are you raising? Because I don't want to sit there and be mean to it. So I understand it's mainly symbolic, but that was just a move that I made.
I can agree to, I can number one on that list and that.
And again, we, that field operator position that we funded out of reserve, that was to put our intern into a full-time position. He got his master's degree and he's been instrumental in putting that GIS system together and working with our new GPR sled to convey that data onto the mapping system. And he'll start working on an asset management system very soon. But to me, the information handling and storage on our utility But to me, the information handling and storage on our utility infrastructure is severely lacking. And that's going to be a great investment. And that's the same thing with the license incentives and that's forced out. It goes, goes out and gets certifications and distribution licenses and, and we moved that, kept it in the budget that it will be paid for under the utility reserve account. And again, the item six and seven, I totally intend to have refunded into the budget by November when we implement the stormwater revenue recapture fee.
So at, at this point in time, does Stephen have any projection of what we're going to end up the end of the year in funds?
Typically, I think he does have an idea, but we're around 250 or 350,000. And if you, we take a little bit of that, maybe about 50,000 out and add it to this amount, we will be at no net impact on the fee. And there'll also be some money there. We're anticipating an increase in the maintenance of the wetlands and ponds.
I, I've heard you say that a couple of times.
Yeah.
Why are we trying to get to no net increase when we're running a utility? And that is almost impossible.
Well, we're, we're going to note that it increased to the assessment across the board, the utilities bearing the brunt of the cost because they have the money where the OO1 doesn't.
Trouble is, we can't get the OO1 money. How would you do this?
No. We only do that.
Do that, that's it.
And we, we pad, pad a few things, you know?
If, if you take it out of the assessment, we'll go along with that as long as it stays out, taken out the base rate. That's why we're penalizing large volume users.
We can look at that and I'll be bringing that forward to you with the rate consult because it'll be looking at the impacts also to the utility relocations at both intersections. You know, we're looking at a bid of 732,000 at one. And when you add the engineering and construction management and a 10% contingency, you're about $880,000. Probably looking at a million, million one. At Commerce Lake. So when the rate consultant comes in, he's going to show what the impact of that rate will be. And we'll look at timeframe to spread that out. Because I'll probably be paying for it out of utility reserves, but we need that money back in the reserves just in case something happens just like this, because it goes to show you, you could vaporize $2 million real quick in the utility business. Yeah. And so we'll recapture that. And we'll also look at the impact of recapturing that utility assessment to the OO1. And that'll probably be pennies on the month, but you know, we'll get that money back. But we'll show that all to the board. We'll lay it out to them, show them the timeframes and the impact to the rates. And I, I have to repeat, we have the lowest utility rates in Southwest Florida. And pushing 13 out of 13. And if we have to bring it to 10th or 11th, I'm not going to apologize for that.
Chris?
Yes?
Go ahead. I just wanted to ask if, I'm assuming the budget is going to be on the next agenda also?
Yes.
The review of it. Can you give us two different budgets to work with? And, and the one is what we have now, but then showing these cuts so that we can look at the difference and see if it's really worthwhile making these cuts?
Sure. Well, we'll, we'll take care of it. And the, the first three have already been approved by the board to take, leaving the positions gone. You know, that'll come out of the budget already. That position's already gone. But the two and the three, we moved and had approved by the board to take that out of reserve. So you'll have that $60,000 will be out. And that position's 110 out of that 339. But yes, we'll bring all those numbers to you and show you what it's going to do to the assessment.
Yeah. I, I would feel better waiting to approve any more of these cuts until after we actually see how much of an impact are we talking about? If we're talking about, you know, very little, they may not be worthwhile doing. At least that's my opinion. I'll wait to hear what other people have to say.
Yeah, I, I think my input on this is, once we get down to, you know, final, final budget, or at least not final, but the, the next round, whatever the dollar amount is that we feel needs to be reduced in order to get to a desirable point, if that's what we decide, then we take that dollar amount and say, okay, that, you have $250,000 you need to cut. Now, some of them might, some of that might come out of this. Some of it might come from some supervisor recommendation. So I would, I wouldn't necessarily want us to say, hey, we're going to come with two budgets. One is with these, this, these items in it and the other one is without. I think we have these in our back pocket, you know, because I think staff's already said, hey, these are items that could potentially be pulled. But I don't know if I would go through the work of, of of having to compare two budgets, because really it just comes down to a dollar amount, right? I mean,
That's true.
So, but I understand what you're saying, Morgan. And I, I agree with it, but I just, I don't think we need to go through the exercises of having two budgets, one with these items in it and one with them not the next.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that too. I just, I just don't want to approve these cuts if it's really not going to be significant enough to make a difference.
I support that.
I see Stephen Blum's online and for us to take, you know, this amount of money or look at where the budget is and then what type of cuts we need to go to that increase, I would take a tremendous amount of work. We can do some desktop for the next meeting and discuss it in detail because we want to have it ready for August 20. This is Flaherty. Ask a question.
I do. We're getting rid of a person and hiring a new person?
Scott already took care of that. We have deleted a position in the enterprise fund. We took our intern and made him full-time.
So we eliminated somebody and hired someone.
And it was, it was due to a skill set and ability and informational needs.
And it sounded like to me, while ago, the blessing was implying that this, this deal on the Zetter thing isn't going to get taken care of with the staff we've got. What are we looking at that she needs to make that happen?
Well, we would, and Kenny and I have been talking about that as another field operator position. And she was mentioning today, he wanted to get Wyatt. Well, because of that valve replacement, Wyatt wasn't available because we were out flushing the lines today. And that does happen sometime with emergencies. But typically Wyatt or Mary could be available to do that. But it comes to a point that we need another field tech like that. We're looking at it closely. Then we'll put money on the reserve account to get that labor for you. Hopefully things will get better in the budget, the economy. Because as you said, Mr. Tinkle, we're running a utility and it has to work.
We're not doing anybody any favors.
No. And we'll be looking at that in the rate case. We'll be presenting all that to you and that should be in September. That report will be done and it'll be coming in front of you.
Leslie didn't say it, but do you think that that position would be a one-year position to clean up all the Zetter related issues? Can we get it done in one year?
Well, we hope so. It depends on the number of failures we continue to get. If we continue to have issues with the equipment that gets running at 95%, and what he's saying is typically correct. You need one person that's kind of dedicated that goes around. We'll be fine. But if we continue to have the failure rate, replacement rate, and it also impacts things across the board. We had a customer today, what do you mean it billed for 60,000 gallons? Well, last, last month when it was zero gallons, you didn't say anything. Well, we didn't know if he was a snowbird or not. So all of a sudden, you've got Zetter equipment worth like your neighbor, Mr. Tinkle. And he, he gets a bill for 60,000 gallons. Well, he used it, but that causes a ripple effect right through customer service and a couple of phone calls and a bill adjustment.
You can't talk long enough to explain that.
No. And, you know, when you, when those things pile up like that and it's taken 30 minutes to get it straightened out from a number of people, it, it's a huge burden on the staff.
I think Doug had a good idea. We itemize these things that are subsequent to reduction or deletion. I'd like to see them ranked as the ones that are least harmful who is at the top and the ones that were doing just like that salary reduction of yours to ours. That, to me, you couldn't put that far enough at the bottom. That just to me is ridiculous. But anyway, rank them such that if we do, kind of like Doug was saying, that we need a 3% cut. Here's 3% of value right here. And, and have it really mean something that we, we cut something that we can truly do without. Some of these other things to me, that sidewalk scares the hell out of me. These sidewalks are falling apart in this community.
Well, we're going to be funding those items from another source, Mr. Tinkle, and it hurt me too. But we're kind of spreading it out among that assessment methodology in the different areas. And you have your transportation, your waterway management. So I was trying to.
I go along. I like Doug's idea.
We'll, we'll bring that forward to you at the next meeting and we'll start looking at it closer and get ready for August 20.
Okay. We got one consent agenda item?
My motion to approve.
Second. Motion to the second. Take the vote. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The consent agenda is approved. That leaves us to supervisor comments. Supervisor Flaherty? No comments? Okay. Supervisor Banks, comments?
No.
Chair Feinberg, any comments?
I have none.
Besides wanting to adjourn. Mr. Tinkle, are you done for the day?
I am done for the day.
Well, thank you very much. Then we will show a meeting adjournment at 7:15, four and a half hours later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for arranging to get Cecil here.